Well, good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Welcome to the Lakewood City Council regular meeting agenda for this Monday, April seventeen, two thousand and twenty-three. Madam Clerk, if you please call the roll.
Councilmember Anderson.
Here.
Councilmember Bell.
Here.
Councilmember Bokey.
Here.
Councilmember Branstetter.
Here.
Member Laura Sella.
Here.
Deputy Mayor Moss.
Here.
And Mayor Whelan.
Present.
You have a quorum.
Great, thank you. Now, if you'd please stand and join me in a brief moment of silence in recognition of our servicemen and women serving this great country at home and abroad, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance, torn nation's flag.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America, to the republic where it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Well, thank you and welcome, everyone. Good to see you here tonight. First portion of tonight's agenda is the proclamation and presentation section. Tonight, we are pleased to have a presentation from the Lakewood Rotary Club to present a check to the city of Lakewood and specifically to our Parks and Recreation Department, Mary Dodsworth. So if Mr. Bill Potter from the Rotary Club of Lakewood, as well as the other Rotary Club members, come on up, and I assume, Mr. Potter, you might want to have a few comments on the dais, and then I believe Ms. Dodsworth will receive the check from you. Oh, I can come up and receive it, I guess. And then we will all come up and take a photograph.
Well, we're just really grateful for the ability to partner with the city to take care of the much-needed repair of the swings at the playground area of Fort Silicon Park. Thanks to a donation from the Lakewood Club of Rotary and a district grant, we got it pulled off just in the nick of time. Thanks for the great partnership from everybody.
Thank you. It's always great when a banker brings a check to you as opposed to the other way around. So thank you, Bill. Oh, that's unfortunate, but we do appreciate all the good work, and we'll come on up and take a photograph together. Come on up, Mary. Well, thank you, Rotary Club members. You do such incredible work in our community. We certainly appreciate it, and thank you for coming. And we know there's another item on the agenda tonight, so hang tight, because now you get to enjoy the public comment section of tonight's agenda. Public comments are accepted by mail, email, or by live virtual or in-person comment. Comments may be submitted in advance by mail or email to Ms. Brianna Schumacher, our city clerk, at six thousand Main Street Southwest here in Lakewood, or to her email address, bshumacher@cityoflakewood.us. Comments received up to an hour before the meeting have been provided to all council members electronically, but the clerk will read the names of those who have submitted comments in advance, so we have and maintain a record.
Mayor, we received written comments in advance from Casey Crook and Tishamir Dunlop.
Thank you very much. And the purpose of that is, you've submitted your public comment, but certainly if you're here in the audience, you can read your comments or present. Members of the audience may comment on items related to any matter pertaining to city business under the public comment period. Comments are limited to three minutes per person. We ask that you approach the podium, state your name and your residence, such as Paul Bokey, Lakewood, and then proceed with your comment. Virtual comments are also allowed here in the city of Lakewood. If you'd like to provide live virtual public comment, you can join our Zoom meeting as an attendee by dialing the telephone number that should be appearing on the screen, dialing the meeting ID number, eight-six-eight-seven-two-sixty-three-twenty-three-seventy-three, or visit zoom.us and enter the meeting ID number, eight-six-eight-seven-two-six-three-two-three-seven-three. Please use the raise the hand feature so we can identify you to be called upon, and you will also be allowed three minutes to speak. What I typically do is I rotate back and forth between those who are appearing virtually and those who are in person. And tonight, I'll first call on those who are appearing by Zoom or on phone, raise their virtual hand to speak, and then I'll read those who have signed in to speak. And if you didn't hit the sign-in sheet, that's okay, because I invite everyone who's in the audience, if they have yet to sign in, they certainly are welcome to just step up to the podium and queue up for public comments. If you have comments tonight relating to the public hearing for the fiscal year two thousand and twenty-three Community Development Block Grant Annual Action Plan, that is part of the regular agenda under public hearings and appeals, and please reserve your comments if you have them pertaining to that particular issue at the time of the public hearing, so that we can maintain a clear record. So at this time, Madam Clerk, if you would call on, my screen is not operating here.
The first individual we have is Dennis Haugen.
There we go. Mr. Haugen. Mr. Haugen, you're up. Going once. Is he there, Mr. Haugen? Let's skip on to the next one. Is there another hand raised? I see names, but no other hands raised. Is Mr. Haugen back on or not? Okay, I'm going to turn now to those who have signed in to speak, seeing no other hands raised for virtual public comment, correct, Madam Clerk?
Mayor, that is correct.
Okay, we'll turn to the sign-in sheet. Tamara Cook is the first individual who's signed up to address council during the public comment. Ms. Cook.
Hi, my name is Tamara Cook, and I live in Lakewood, Washington. I want to talk about grocery outlet going out of business. I'm hoping that the city will encourage grocery outlet to stay, maybe intercede with a feasible option that will service the business as well as low-income people such as myself. It was a big hit when SARS left. Safeway is a nice store, but it's a little too expensive for people that are low-income and on a fixed income. We need stores like Grocery Outlet. You're going to build housing here. We need to go someplace to eat. The other thing is, I'm going to hit the same bandwagon again about Hatton wanting to know who I'm doing business with. I want my city to set up some sort of a system that people, that businesses will publish their name and their license number on the building. I want to be able to go to a brick-and-mortar building and report them if there's some kind of shenanigans. I want to know if these people are from out of the country, or if they're from in the country, if they have a license, if they pay their taxes. These things are important to me. Bank, US Bank and a lot of banks, they say, well, we got a license to work in the state. I want more than that. This is my home. I don't want to hear later, well, Osama Bin Laden owns that chain of stores, and that's, no, I want my country to start securing our home. The other thing is information. There's not a box that has a newspaper or anything like that. I will not check that box on my device because the agreements on them are so archaic. I had to learn networking. I had to learn small devices. Then I had to go to a law library to understand it. We need a good news source, a reliable news source, and we need a library with open-minded librarians that will help us find the things we need to find. Right now, I'm disappointed in what I have. I don't use the Internet no more. I don't use any of that. And I don't think any of you know who your administrator is. You don't know if you even belong to, you're being studied as a sociological study. You don't know none of this stuff, because you checked that box and you said, I'll agree to this false environment. All right? I've done a lot of studying. I want you guys to back me up here. I want everyone to be, at least, an awareness campaign.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Next, James Dunlop.
Hello, my name is James Dunlop, and I am a Lakewood resident. I want to talk about personal responsibility. I might think that I can drop a piece of litter, and it doesn't really matter. I mean, what is one piece of litter in the infinity of litter that's being dropped around Lakewood? Likewise, I might think that I can go into Target and shoplift a pack of cheese, for example. I mean, Target is a big company. They're not going to miss a pack of cheese. I mean, besides, they've got more money for me. I mean, why not? But it is a matter of personal responsibility. It's a matter, perhaps, if we look at it from, say, the perspective of, you know, Emmanuel Kant's deodontic approach, that if I advocate something, if I do something, I should wish it in all situations. So, for example, if I shoplift a pack of cheese from Target, then I'm saying it's okay to do that in all situations. So we would get the situation like we have, perhaps, that the news media report in, for example, Chicago or Los Angeles, where perhaps law and order are breaking down, where there are no penalties, where everyone, it's a free-for-all. And so personal responsibility is, really does matter, and the small things we do, yes, they matter. And when you are a public figure, what you do does matter. So, at the last, I believe, at the last study session before the Easter break, the mayor seemed to be gloating about his spring break. I mean, he's a public figure. He's not a private individual. He's a public figure. Now, a return trip to Hawaii is going to lead to melting of five-point-four square meters of sea ice. It's going to lead to one-point-two-one tons of carbon emission. And so, but again, you might argue that, well, he doesn't go to Hawaii. That seat's still going to be there. But if enough people don't go to Hawaii, that plane is going to be canceled. It's not going to be economic anymore. And so, the mayor, who talked about the wonderful things going on in Lakewood, as far as climate initiatives are concerned, publicly gloated about what he was planning on doing, and what he was, and really, the damage it was going to cause. And again, he's a public figure. He's a role model. He's not just a reflection of the mob. Maybe he thinks he's a reflection of the mob. You know, we should all do it. We should all destroy the planet. So I think the mayor should consider the example he is setting, and also the great extent to which he is a role model.
Christina Manetti.
Christina Manetti, Lakewood. Yes, it's called cumulative impact. So a few days ago, I saw by Spanaway Marsh, the area that would be razed to build the two-hundred-and-eighty-nine tiny structures. It's got oak woodland with wetlands and two creeks. And I know you're going to say it has nothing to do with you. It's Spanaway. It's not Lakewood, but I know that you're contributing to it, and you had some say in what was going on. I would like to request that, when faced with whether or not to lend your support to a development project such as this, to take the time to really understand what it is you are saying yes to. It's not just yes to constructing two-hundred-square-foot dwellings for people who have no place to live. It is yes to destroying critical habitat. If you saw the property, you would easily recognize that it is completely unsuitable for the purpose. I don't know if everybody's been there, if everybody's seen it, with scientists, habitat biologists, everything. Please stop me now. But I don't have the impression that you've been there. The structures will be crammed into the narrow wedge of the property, the only dry area to build on. Nevertheless, the microclimate means that the trees there are covered in thick moss, like the rainforest. The very large Spanaway Swamp is just a few feet from where those houses are going to be. While being bitten by swarms of mosquitoes, residents will have very loud airplanes flying low over their encampment at regular intervals. We heard them ourselves. Take time to see what's there. Don't take SoundView consultants' word for it. I know you're going to say, oh, but the consultants are going to tell us what's what. We know how they operate already. They've said in other places that there aren't any Gary Oaks when there are Gary Oaks. The property is crammed full of native plants, some of which I've never seen in Lakewood. Trilliums are not very common. A friend in Whidby Island, for example, told me that there's only one patch on the island. He has the Spanaway site. There's a whole path just full of them. There are many other native plants there, and we saw just a tiny portion of the site. Trillium, large Gary Oaks, even a very old and decadent one with clear habitat values, snags and hollows, bald-hip rose, a lot of gooseberry, salmonberry, piggyback plants, snowberry, of course, blackcap raspberry, trailing blackberry, hazelnut, low Oregon grape, and tall Oregon grape, very common. This area is one of the only three last-known habitats of the Western Grace world, which is going to be under consideration for endangered status. It's closely connected to Gary Oak. Paving over twenty-seven acres immediately adjacent to wetlands is very much ill-advised. Not only will it create runoff and further degrade the water, it's also going to make an increased heat effect. I ask you to do what you can now, to act, to convince those people who are advocating for this project to find a different and more suitable site. I haven't heard of any of you making any serious objections. If you have, please tell me afterwards when and where you did that. In the future, before deciding to aid and abet the destruction of our environment and critical habitats, please make a point of going to see them with your own eyes. Educate yourselves with true experts who base themselves on the best available science. How can you decide is good if you don't even know what's at stake? Once destroyed, they're gone forever, and their destruction will be on your conscience.
That is the last individual who has signed in to address a council during the public comment period, but that doesn't preclude anyone from stepping up if they'd like to address council during the public comment period. Feel free. Anyone else? Sure, come on up. Yeah. Welcome.
Hi, my name is Eric Jurgensen. I live in Lakewood, live near Fort Silicon Park, on a dead-end road to Fort Silicon Park. And in two thousand and sixteen, a hundred and sixty trees were taken down around Fort Silicon Park, and it was done in the name of the improvement of a road around Wahop Lake. And I was so affected by that when it happened. It was so unnecessary. It was said that they were diseased trees. The vast majority of those trees that were taken out were healthy. And I say this because it affected me seriously. I bought my house because it's a beautiful place. It's beautiful because it's green. And everybody, it's a common knowledge now that green areas help human beings in their mental health and in their physical health. And the reduction of green in this city is alarming. And those trees that went down didn't need to go down. I'm not trying to, they're gone. They're gone forever. There is a big-leaf maple stump. It's on the northwest, excuse me, the north, yes, the northwest end of the park, where an enormous amount of cottonwood trees, probably eight huge cottonwood trees, were taken down. It was the most bewildering thing I've ever seen in a city government do. Going into a park, a hundred and sixty trees gone. Well, recently, I was going down this road called, it's right next to Fort Silicon Park, and the name of that road is Elwood Drive. And there's red marks on five trees there, two of which are over a hundred years old. And I talked to Troy Kelly about it. He said there's going to be a roundabout there, and that I had to go in. And I really want to question that. And he said, well, they're not in the park because they're on the right-of-way of the road. I understand that, but it's completely unnecessary. And I could go on. On the trees that went down on eighty-eighth, I saw them myself. I drove by every day. Many of those trees, large trees, are gone forever. And I could point out tree after specific, large, old trees that have gone down in this city unnecessarily. You can make sidewalks go around trees. And I just ask that you reconsider taking those trees down on the corner of Dalton and Edgewood Drive, Elwood Drive, and to take a good, hard look at the attitude of the development of this city. And thank you.
Thank you. That is the last individual, at least, who's approached the podium to address council during the public comment period. But again, if there are anyone else, any other members of the audience, feel free to do so. Otherwise, I'll go back, right, I'll go back to Zoom and capture the last. Yes, ma'am. Go ahead.
It was not my intent to speak tonight. I'm here just for the first time.
Welcome.
But I would like to agree with this person.
Need your name real quick.
My name is Kim Lopez. I'm a resident of Lakewood.
Thank you.
I had cancer and was not able to go to Silicon Park for a time because I couldn't get around. I was getting chemo and radiation. And when I went back to that park and I saw all those trees ripped out around the lake, I was furious, and I agree with you completely. There was no need to take all of those out. That is a habitat for animals. We can walk around the outside of those trees. We do not need to be pulling down trees. And even when we're building houses, build around the trees, for goodness sakes. It's easy to cut them down. I don't get why we're doing this. That's it. Thank you.
Thank you. After anyone else approaching the podium, I'm going to turn to members on Zoom, first with Mr. Haugen, who has his hand raised.
Okay, can you hear me?
Yes.
This is Dennis Haugen from Sioux Falls, South Dakota. Lived in Lakewood up till three years ago. But a news article just came on about Seattle and the drugs and its twenty-five people, weak or dying from some kind of drug overdose or another. But your whole homeless thing that you're trying to keep up, you have to remember that you, as a majority, voted for sanctuary cities, open borders, and the president who invited illegal immigrants. That has caused the cartels to grow to tremendous strength and with tremendous money. So my prediction is you will never be able to get anywhere close to helping the homeless in the sense that you can find a place for them. That will now grow so quickly that, you know, and I know the government will throw money, and they'll throw grants and all kinds of attempts to throw money, but it's so corrupt now, you couldn't make a dent in the problem. And you sort of tend to get, you're almost codependent in the sense that the drugs help disabled people, and then you have government bureaucrats that come up with ideas of helping, but it really doesn't help. But the bureaucrats need the homeless, and so it's just a self-dicking program. You might take a look in the past. If you remember, a few years back, I showed some videos on Acorn. This is a big 501(c) operation, 501(c) three and (c) four. And there were offices in every city in the nation. And James O'Keefe and another person pulled an undercover operation and found out they were encouraging the poor to get into the prostitution business. And, you know, there's just, there's no, there's no controls. There's no accountability. There's no audits. They were finding out where that government money went, how it was used, how it was managed or mismanaged. And so, but there's a lot of history where you can go back and look and see how different things work. And, you know, and I've shown you a lot of videos, and they're in your system somewhere. But no, homeless, you're not going to keep up with it. It's going to just grow and grow and grow because you have drugs and everything else working against you. Thank you.
Next, Amelia Escobedo.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes.
Hello, my name is Amelia Escobedo, and I live in Lakewood. I want to say thank you to Kim for speaking up. I heard you, and I told you I would show up if you showed up. There's a lot to talk about. Currently, I'm working in the Clover Park School District, and there is a lot, a lot that needs to change in our school districts that I'm seeing. I want to inform you that there needs to be better mental health services for students. There needs to be more education on sexual harassment. There needs to be more education on bullying. Something needs to be done. There needs to be places where these kids have safe spaces to go speak to somebody, regardless if it's not family, somebody else. There is so much happening in Lakewood that I can't even put it in the time that I have. I am appalled that Lakewood just keeps pushing the houseless out of Lakewood and into other areas. Like, it's not our problem. It's not our issue. Ask people to take care of these people that are houseless. If you believe in the Lord, then you believe in taking care of these people, not brushing them off to other cities and other areas. And the area that you do want to put them in, and you do want to deforest, is not even safe for them to live at. That is not safe land, with the planes going over that straight pollution that goes over, all over that area. Right now, on Spanaway, going towards Spanaway, you have people on the highway, living there right now, on the highways, because you have pushed them out. And where's their help? Where are they supposed to walk to to get help? Where are the services for them? Quit giving the money to these freaking organizations that aren't doing anything, and give it to the houseless. Period. Punto. I'm tired of y'all playing in Lakewood with lives, with people's lives. You have students in colleges right now that are going to get sent back after never living in Mexico in their lives. They are Americans. They're indigenous Americans. Right now, you have a hundred and eighty-thousand Latino and so many women missing, and they are not counted as indigenous. Nobody is tracking these missing girls that are here. Nobody is paying attention to the girls that are getting assaulted at the schools, in bathrooms. What are y'all doing about it? I am upset with this city council, and all of y'all need to get the heck out. I am upset with this city council and all of y'all need to get the heck out.
Thank you. That was the last individual with a hand raised to address counsel somewhat during this virtual public comment session. Are there any other members of the audience who desire to address the council electronically or virtually, Madam Clerk?
There are no virtual hands raised at this time, Mayor.
Great. Public comment is closed. We now turn to the consent agenda.
A, approval of the minutes of the city council study session of March twenty-seventh, twenty twenty-three. B, approval of the minutes of the city council meeting of April third, twenty twenty-three. C, motion number twenty twenty-three dash forty-two, authorizing the execution of an agreement with KBH Construction, Inc. For the Bridgeport Way and Pacific Highway Gateway Monument Project. D, motion number twenty twenty-three dash forty-three, authorizing the execution of an amendment to the agreement with the State of Washington Department of Enterprise Services for the City Hall Investment Grade Audit. E, motion number twenty twenty-three dash forty-four, authorizing the execution of an interlocal agreement with the State Department of Social and Health Services for the construction of a temporary traffic signal at Silicon Boulevard and Chapel Gate Road. F, motion number twenty twenty-three dash forty-five, canceling the city council study session of Monday, May eighth, twenty twenty-three. G, items filed in the office of the city clerk. One, Public Safety Advisory Committee meeting minutes of December seventh, twenty twenty-two. Two, Lakewood Arts Commission meeting minutes of January ninth, twenty twenty-three. Three, Parks and Recreation Advisory Board meeting minutes of January twenty-fourth, twenty twenty-three. Four, Public Safety Advisory Committee meeting minutes of February first, twenty twenty-three. Five, Parks and Recreation Advisory Board meeting minutes of February twenty-eighth, twenty twenty-three. And six, Planning Commission meeting minutes of March fifteenth, twenty twenty-three.
Thank you very much. Is there any item on the consent agenda which any council member wishes to remove from consideration at this time? If not, do I have a motion to adopt the consent agenda as presented? It's been moved by Deputy Mayor Moss, seconded by Councilmember Anderson, that we adopt the consent agenda as presented. Is there any further discussion? Great. All those in favor of adoption of the consent agenda as presented signify by saying aye. Aye. Any opposed? Consent agenda has been adopted. We turn to the regular agenda. Public hearings and appeals. This is the date set for the public hearing on the fiscal year twenty twenty-three Community Development Block Grant Annual Action Plan. And as an overview, before we take testimony during the public hearing, I'll have our housing program manager Jeff Gum give us a brief overview.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, Deputy Mayor, members of the council. As the mayor mentioned, tonight is the annual action plan for twenty twenty-three. It's specifically related to the Community Development Block Grant Funds and Home Investment Partnership Act Funds that the city of Lakewood will receive. allocations for tonight's hearing will be expended between July first, twenty twenty-three and June thirtieth, twenty twenty-four. The funds uh, in question tonight are CDBG, three hundred and fifty, three hundred and fifty-two thousand nine hundred and twenty-nine dollars and thirty-six cents is proposed to be allocated to major home repair program. Twenty thousand dollars is proposed to be allocated to the Emergency Assistance for Displaced Residents Program. Seventy-five thousand dollars is proposed to be allocated to rebuilding together South Sound for a housing rehabilitation program. Eighty thousand dollars is proposed to be allocated to Emergency Assistance Payments Program for the CDBG Fund. Ten thousand dollars is proposed to be allocated for CDBG Administration of Home Housing Services. One hundred and eight thousand, four hundred and ninety-two dollars and eighty cents is proposed to be allocated to CDBG Administration. And two hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars in NSP one program income is to be allocated back to the NSP one abatement program. The home funds uh, for which we're having the hearing tonight are specifically allocated in the amounts of four hundred and sixty-nine thousand, six hundred and fourteen dollars to the Affordable Housing Fund. Thirty-seven thousand, nine hundred and twenty-four dollars is to be allocated to administration to the city of Lakewood for the ten percent um, allocation for Tacoma's home administration of the program. As the mayor mentioned, tonight is the public hearing. This is in, in the middle of an ongoing fifty or thirty day public citizens comment period. Comment period runs from April first to April thirtieth. Um, the city will accept either written or comment, written or um, in-person comments at the hearing and up until the thirtieth of April. So with that, I turn it back to the mayor.
Thank you. Any clarifying questions for Mr. Gum, Mr. Anderson?
Um, Mr. Gum, on the affordable housing fund, this is a clarification. How does that break down between capital and programmatic?
So the four hundred and sixty-nine, six fourteen is proposed to be funded for primarily capital programs. We, it, it isn't broken out necessarily into say staff time or different projects until they're allocated. So the four hundred and sixty-nine thousand is specifically just into the fund. When it, when it would be allocated into a project, um, those numbers would come before council and the breakout would be noted.
Any other questions? Thank you, Mr. Gum, for your work on this. This is the date set for the public hearing on the twenty twenty-three Community Development Block Grant CDBG Annual Action Plan. Public testimony on this hearing is accepted by mail, email, or live virtual or in-person comment. Testimony may be submitted in advance by mail or email to our city clerk, Brianna Schumacher at six thousand Main Street Southwest here in Lakewood. Or to her email address at b schumacher at cityoflakewood.us. Testimony received up to an hour before the meeting has been or will have been provided to the city council electronically. Madam Clerk, if you'd please read the names of any individuals who have submitted testimony for this public hearing in advance.
Uh, Mayor Lynda Davis provided testimony which was provided on page fifty, sixty-seven of the council packet. Other than that, no testimony has been received.
Thank you very much. Virtual and in-person testimony is limited to three minutes per person. Virtual testimony is authorized. If you'd like to provide live virtual public testimony, you can join our Zoom meeting as indicated on the screen by dialing the number referenced and entering the meeting ID number and using the star nine raise the hand feature to be called upon. Those who are present, you know, in the audience who have signed up to address uh, counsel during or to provide testimony rather during the public hearing would have signed in on the public hearing sign-in sheet. However, I have no individuals who have signed in to provide testimony uh, to counsel during this public hearing. But I will go ahead and call on those who have appeared via Zoom first, and then we will turn to those who may be here in person or who may elect to address counsel in person during this public hearing. Madam Clerk.
Dennis Haugen.
Mr. Haugen, this is a public hearing on the fiscal year twenty twenty-three Community Development Block Grant Annual Action Plan. So I would direct that your comments pertain to that and not to something in Sioux Falls.
Okay, the, the only question I have is you're building, you're building homes. Okay, what, what's the status of the people that are living in these homes? Do they have a job? If they don't have a job, there are communities out there that would love to have them. Because there are some states and some places that are growing. And uh, and there's, they'll even, they can even get a free education to get a job. Uh, free training and whatnot. So there's no purpose to these homes. You need to have a purpose. And have that very clear that you're trying to help somebody. But how are you trying to help them? And I don't see the clarity there. I didn't see the clarity when you talked about these things when I lived there. But uh, there are lots of jobs out there, but they may not be, be where you are. And it seems to me that uh, suggesting a grant that helps people get to the jobs so they can take care of themselves. Thank you.
Thank you. Madam Clerk, any other members of the audience who wish to address the council during this public hearing virtually?
Mayor, there are no other virtual attendees with their hands raised at this time.
Very good. Uh, then I will turn one last time to those who may be in the audience who wish to uh, present testimony on this public hearing on the fiscal year twenty twenty-three Community Development Block Grant CDBG Annual Action Plan. As I have no uh, individuals listed on the sign-in sheet. Are there any individuals wishing to provide testimony during the public hearing on the fiscal year twenty twenty-three Community Development Block Grant Annual Action Plan? Seeing none, I'll declare the public hearing closed. We now turn to unfinished business, Mr. Coffield.
There is none this evening, Mayor.
How about new business?
None this evening, Mayor.
Great. Then we'll turn to reports by the city manager. Mr. Coffield, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Mayor, and good evening, council. Um, I'd like to first call upon our SSMCP Program Manager, uh, Bill Adamson, Colonel Retired, to give you a quick update on the two thousand twenty-three South Sound Military and Community Partnership Work Plan, which is uh, well underway. So uh, with that, Colonel Adamson.
Uh, good evening. This is Bill Adamson. As the city manager said, I've been uh, the program director for SSMCP for the last little over seven years. I'm going to try to share some slides here, although I don't see a control for that, Brianna.
Uh, down at the bottom of your screen, there should be a green share screen feature.
Yeah, I know. I know where it's supposed to be. It's just not there.
Yeah.
Okay, hang on. Gotcha. See if these things come up now.
We see it.
You're okay. Thank you very much. So uh, SSMCP is a uh, membership dues and grant funded organization that focuses on the issues of local government and the JBLM military community. Uh, we kind of follow our own governance structure, all internal partnership, governance structure of which Lakewood also serves as our executive agent and an executive leadership team member. Uh, we have gone through our own internal process beginning back in September of twenty twenty-two, where our steering committee approved our work plan and then we briefed that to the elected officials council in November. So for some of you who have attended any of these meetings, this will be old news to you. Most of what we've come up with for the next two years is focused on an update to our growth coordination plan, which occurred in twenty twenty-two. So these are not prioritized in any particular order. But the top one is a, we sought a federal grant which council was reviewed a couple of months back and approved for seven hundred and seventy-six thousand dollars to do the three things you see listed there. And resiliency planning is a new uh, area for SSMCP to, to dive into and it's related to climate change and a number of other things that could lead to vulnerabilities uh, for JBLM. And we're going to try to address those uh, vulnerabilities and come up with uh, recommendations that local community investments could help mitigate those vulnerabilities. That particular effort is, has just started in uh, last month. On occupational licensure, this is something we have advocated for, for several years. We're taking a look at military spouse employment study. This is going to be a statewide study that we're working in cooperation with WDVA. And then off base attainable housing, uh, we did a study back in night, into twenty twenty focused on lower enlisted. Oh, we were requested by JBLM to redo this study because there was a conflicting DoD housing market analysis that was done also in twenty twenty. The results of those two studies were quite divergent. And uh, JBLM leadership has used our study to have DoD come back and redo their housing market analysis next month. We have advocated for I-five improvements for at least seven years. We continue to work that. Now we're focused on the section of road that starts at Mounts Road where the train derailed all the way down to uh, Tumwater. And we're particularly focused right now on the Nisqually River Delta portion where we got a seventy-five million dollar add-on from the state legislature last year. And we're working our way through options to uh, mitigate a number of problems that are in the uh, I-five area of the Nisqually Delta. And we're doing this in very close coordination with Thurston County and the Nisqually Indian Tribe. We continue to work the North Clear Zone problem. Uh, this is going to be a long-term, multi-decade effort. Uh, we bought a property called Tactical Taylor uh, last year, but our process currently uh, the army process for obtaining federal funds requires us to have a willing seller and that has slowed the process quite a bit. We are just now finishing up our third economic impact analysis, the impact of JBLM on the South Sound, which we define as Pierce and Thurston County and then Nisqually Indian Tribe lands. Basically what we're gonna, we'll be briefing this uh, next week to the uh, steering committee and in May uh, to our elected officials council. And it's an update of the last one we did back in twenty twenty. We're working childcare uh, closely with the base. It's the base's number one issue right now. Uh, we advocate for a number of state level activities here in this time of the year uh, with the session going on. Been down there a number of times to testify. Things will be closing out shortly. We took on a new task that was not part of the growth coordination plan update, having to do with the siting of a new airport. Uh, did a couple testimonies here the last couple of months on that. There was a bill proposed by the Chair of the House Transportation Committee, Jake Fai, which is essentially shutting down the current Commercial Aviation Coordinating Commission and starting a new process, starting a new that's still going through for a floor vote unless it happened today. And then another effort that needs to be done uh, is a statewide look at the military defense sector. The last time that was done was in twenty-ten. It was focused mostly on the uh, defense uh, contractor contracts that are in the state. It was done prior to a time when there was a lot of talk of military downsizing and the number that was being bounced around uh, back in that timeframe was a cut of twelve thousand uh, army at uh, JBLM. That never came to fruition, uh, but the state hasn't taken a look at it statewide for over a dozen years. And then we have an action on a JBLM workforce survey. SSMCP has done these. This will be the fifth, now the sixth, the one that I've been involved in. Uh, but we've had to change uh, the way we do these. The new administration at JBLM uh, had to go through a process where the army has come up with its own template for the questionnaires and we had to eliminate any mention of SSMCP. Uh, and any uh, we used to give out sort of like awards to people who took the test or took the survey for us and then if they got their name pulled from a hat, more or less, they would get a hundred dollar gift certificate to go to the PX and shop or whatnot. It was just an incentive to get more responses, but can't do that anymore. And so we're still waiting on the final illegal opine from JBLM so that workforce survey can go out. But it will not be administered by SSMCP. It will be administered by the JBLM installation leadership. And just to close out, this last slide uh, was when I put it together, it was a ten-year look. It was ahead for a number of studies and surveys that we're going to be conducting. We did this because of the update to the growth coordination plan. There's a number of things recommended in it. We had to phase this out based on bandwidth of staff to handle all these different areas. Right now we're just below that red triangle. The OLDCC is the Office of Local Defense Community Cooperation. It's the grant that you approved a couple of months ago. And you can see the three projects that we're working on with that grant funding. Uh, that concludes what I have to put out today and I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you very much, Mr. Adamson. Any questions? Councilmember Anderson and then Councilmember Branstadter.
Uh, not a question but a comment. Uh, you know, Bill's also to be commended with, for his work with the Nisqually Tribe. The tribe has agreed to join at the uh, executive committee level for fifty thousand dollars a year, which uh, it is a lot bigger deal than the fifty thousand dollars. It's the cooperation on our efforts of transportation to the Nisqually Delta. Uh, I think it's going to bear fruit uh, for years to come.
Mr. Branstadter.
Thank you, Mr. Area. Mr. Adamson, the, on one of your, your items on the work plan, it talks about support development of and access to attainable off-base housing. There's a lot of effort going on regionally around housing, but it is primarily focused at affordable housing. And can you just talk about what's the nuance of the difference between attainable housing in your project and affordable housing more broadly espoused regionally?
Yeah, I'll give a go at that. There's, there's three A's that we typically come up against: available, affordable, and attainable. And just in my mind, I haven't tracked this for a couple of years. Attainable is kind of the motherload of them all. If it's not affordable, it's not attainable. If it's not available, it's not attainable. So I know there's a Pierce County organization that uses all three A's as part of their logo, but we just thought that attainable was a better term. It captured the essence of both available and affordable.
So as you are focusing the effort that your work plan is going to address, is there a pay grade structure that you're particularly focused on, or is it across the entire spectrum of military personnel?
So the housing problem for military on JBLM is across the spectrum. Our, our study in 2020, though, was focused on E1 to E5 families who have to live off base because there's not enough on-base housing. When we were applying for this grant, there was a 1,000-plus military family backlog on a waiting list for on-base housing. That's focused, that's forcing a lot of military families to look for places off-base. And by policy, DoD expects about 70% of the active-duty force to live off-base anyhow. We were driving that up even more than 70%. So this upcoming study that we're going to be doing in 23, 24, though, is not going to be restricted to just the E1 to E5 pay grade because the problem persists even for the lower officer grades as well. And more and more service members are coming to JBLM, married, and this area's appreciation of real estate costs of, we just, they just can't keep up. I think in 2021, our, our current study that we just started looking at, it was a 21% appreciation on real estate in just 2021 alone. And DoD doesn't move that fast to increase BAH, BAS, I'm throwing out a lot of basic allowance for housing, basic allowance for subsistence, work, pay, all those things. They just don't move that fast. I will say, on the bright side, here in 2023, there was a 12.4% increase in BAH, about an 11% increase in basic allowance for subsistence, which is essentially food money, and a 4.7% payroll increase for active duty, and also an increase for retirees in the area, of which there's about 25,000 of them. That increase was something over 7%, no, 8%. So things on the horizon are looking better. The housing waiting list is now just over 700 people and will be, we, we announced, or JBLM announced a little over a month ago that they got the okay to build 212 new housing units on North Lewis in a Merryweather II housing area. Those will be completed by 2027. So things are starting to pick up in the housing area.
So the, the, when it says manage federal grant funding to support development and access of attainable off-base housing is, what does support look like? Is it, is it a study? Are you going to provide some funding to assist with some sort of programs to help service members locate such housing? Or just what's the breadth of the term "support"?
Well, initially, it's getting, obtaining the funding that I mentioned earlier to do this study, but beyond that, we work with, JBLM has a organization called the Rental Partnership Program. It, those folks that run that are there explicitly to help folks find attainable housing with landlords, property managers that are willing to give military a break. It's typically a 5% reduction in rent costs. They waive the security fees and some of the fees that usually accompany a move into an area. Except for rentals, though, the number of folks that are purchasing homes that are active-duty military is actually going down slightly, but we're going to know more about the numbers for all of that at the end of our study here in 2024. But support, it is not coming up with money for construction of new housing. We may come up with recommendations for local jurisdictions to do things in their zoning or in their codes that might allow more places to build affordable housing, but these will be things that local jurisdictions have to take on, tailor for their own, and decide what they're going to implement. SSMCP has no jurisdictional authority. We just provide recommendations to our jurisdiction members to implement, following their own policies and programs.
Okay, yeah, thank, thank you very much.
Thank you. Any other questions, Mr. Adamson? Well, thank you very much for your work. SSMCP's got an aggressive work plan, and I'm pleased to hear, as Councilmember Anderson indicated, that the Nisqually Tribe is going to take an integral leadership role in the organization, so good, good work on that.
Thank you.
Very good. Next, we will turn to a review of the Rotary Club of Lakewood American Rescue Plan Act ARPA funds request for implementation of the Dolly Parton Imagination Library. And I, I want to comment here. I appreciate staff and the city manager for bringing this forward. I appreciate the audience members from Lakewood Rotary for being here and waiting to the tail end of the meeting. My only comment is sometimes the positive things end up at the end of the agenda, and it would be wonderful if those who addressed the council during public comment recognized that there are many things going on in the city of Lakewood, many of which are positive, including the advocacy for early childhood literacy that we are embarking on and supporting a social service club who stood up and raised money to address early childhood literacy in Lakewood. So with that, Mr. Coffield, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Mayor. I'd like to call upon our Assistant to the City Manager, Policy Analyst Michael Vargas, who's going to give you a brief in on this. And again, this is a great partnership with the Rotary Club of Lakewood, and the recommendation is for this body to appropriate some of its ARPA funds to help get this program off, off the ground. So with that, Mr. Vargas, floor is yours.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor. Deputy Mayor, Councilmembers, Michael Vargas here to provide a review of the Rotary Club of Lakewood's funding request. So the review tonight will outline the club's funding request and funding schedule, as well as the equity impact and program outcome of the Imagination Library program. The analysis tonight focuses on the first five years of the program, that is June of 2023 to June of 2028, although it should be noted that the Rotary Club of Lakewood plans on carrying this program out indefinitely in the community. So I'm also starting on page 72 of your packet tonight, if you'd like to follow along. So the funding request, the Rotary Club of Lakewood requests $77,426 in ARPA funds. The club estimates that this roughly $77,000 request, combined with their own fundraising efforts and ultimately community partnerships, will suffice to launch the program, continue it in the first five years, and provide a strong base for continuing it beyond the five years. For the program outcome, so the three Lakewood zip codes serviced by the Imagination Library would be 98499, 98498, and 98433. The Imagination Library serves all children from birth to five years old with a free monthly book. The three zip codes selected cover all of Lakewood, as well as the entirety of the Clover Park School District, so that is to include addresses in the joint base Lewis-McCord as well. And according to the Imagination Library staff, within the first, within the three Lakewood zip codes, there are approximately 6,000 eligible children for the program. Drawing on well-documented experience, the Imagination Library staff estimates, estimates about 65% of the eligible population will enroll, or approximately 4,000 children. And based on Imagineers, Imagination Library historical trends in communities nationwide, it is estimated that the 4,000 reader mark is reached in about five years, with approximately 20% of the 4,000 reached in year one, 40% of the 4,000 reached in year two, and so on and so forth. So there is a cumulative program outcome table included in your packet as well. Although ultimately outcomes are dependent on community outreach efforts and sign-up rates, and as a lead civil service organization in the community, the Rotary Club of Lakewood is well underway in a variety of partnerships in order to implement the program effectively and provide that community outreach and sign up, and sign up eligible households. Some of the partnership organizations are listed below, such as the Pierce County Library System, the Clover Park School District, the YMCA. The club also plans on reaching out to local hospitals and preschools and other service providers that work with very young children, as well as other local civic organizations to ensure sufficient ongoing funding for the program. So the equity impact. So while the Imagination Library program provides all eligible readers with free books, regardless of socioeconomic status, there are a few characteristics in Lakewood that make it so that the equitable, the equity impact is expected to be pretty sizable, such that Lakewood is a majority-minority community, as well as exhibiting a dumbbell income distribution, with disproportionately a lot of rich and poor alike. So a few statistics that speak to this point. National third-party studies of the Imagination Library participation rate shows approximately 20% of participants come from zip codes with poverty rates of 25% or higher. And according to a recent census, the telecom neighborhood has a 28% poverty rate of children under 18. Close to 50% of Washington State students are eligible for free reduced lunch, and around 70% of the Clover Park School District students are BIPOC. And so while the Rotary Club of Lakewood Imagination Library Committee did offer to keep track of demographics throughout the years of which households are being reached by the program, ultimately, you know, they expect that even without tracking this data, that the, the program will indeed reach disadvantaged children and households who, who would benefit the most from the program. So the funding schedule. So within the first three program years, that is June 2023 to June 2026, the requested $77,426 in ARPA monies completely funds the program. Starting in year four, June 2026 to June 2027, the remaining roughly $20,000 in ARPA monies would be spent completely by December 31, 2026, covering about half of that year's program cost. The remaining program cost for year four would be covered by, well, part of the Rotary Club of Lakewood's recently fundraised $28,000. And in year five, June 2027 to June 2028, the annual program cost would reach a maximum of about $105,000 to fully reach the estimated 4,000 children. And this annual program cost is anticipated to remain steady in subsequent years. Now, there are a few assumptions in this funding schedule. One of them being is that a major funding source of the program is a 50% match from the Washington State Office of Superintendent of Public Instruction, or aka OSPI. This 50% match is implemented via direct payment from OSPI to the Imagination Library. Another assumption, well, really, this funding schedule only takes into account the recent fundraising efforts of the Rotary Club of Lakewood in the recent months, although the Rotary Club is well underway in fundraising efforts that would continue throughout the years. So in year one, two, and three, to build up a healthy stock of fundraising, of fundraised monies to anticipating the end of the ARPA, ARPA money request. And so there is the funding schedule table and a cumulative schedule included in your packet as well. So to wrap things up, the Rotary Club of Lakewood Experience. So the Rotary Club is well-experienced in programs serving the youth in Lakewood amongst all, all grades, amongst them being a tutoring program at the Southgate Elementary while I was still up, as well as a next-step program to assist high school students from disadvantaged backgrounds in the college application process. So really, implementing the Imagination Library would, would add just one more youth program to the Rotary Club's roster here. And so to summarize, it is the staff recommendation that the city council fully fund the Rotary Club of Lakewood's 77,426 ARPA funds request, as it is estimated that this program would produce both considerable and equitable positive literacy impacts for the youngest children in the community. And with that, I welcome any questions or comments from the council. Thank you.
Great. And before I open it up for questions, thank you, Mr. Vargas, for your report and your work with the Rotary Club of Lakewood. I just want to state for the record that there are three members of the Lakewood Rotary Club on this council. I currently serve as the president of the Rotary Club of Lakewood this year, and so I'm just disclosing that as a matter of public record so that it's clear. I'm also an advocate of this program. I think it will do good work for a lot of kids. The impact of 4,000 children annually is huge. So I have a few questions, but I'm going to open it up, but I wanted to make that disclosure on the record. Councilmember Bell and then Councilmember Anderson.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Mr. Vargas. I had a question regarding if the books, they, well, first of all, I think it's a wonderful program. I think it's very worthwhile, and I love to see that the early childhood literacy is being addressed. But I had a question regarding English as a second language, possible other books that would be available to children who are not, don't speak English, and would they be available to these kids, and how would that work?
Thanks, Councilmember Bell. I was actually just discussing this with a representative from the Rotary Club, who actually found out that there is a sort of pilot program for sort of other language books to include Spanish. I'm not sure if, I believe it's being implemented in sort of other areas, although it is a pilot program, and I'm not sure if it would be ready for implementation in Lakewood perhaps anytime soon, although we, you know, Rotary Club could elect to go down that route, and I'm sure as soon as the pilot program sort of reaches sort of availability in the area, that that would be a sort of great, great route to go. So it is available. It is a pilot program amongst the Imagination Library, so it's yet to be determined exactly when it would be available in, in the Lakewood area.
Great. That would be something I would be very interested in and learning more on. Thank you.
Mr. Anderson?
Thank you. As a matter of disclosure, I'm also one of those Lakewood Rotary Club members. I think this is, our city attorney would say this is a remote interest, no, no private interest, personal interest in MS. But I'm going to get on my soapbox for a minute because I think this is the easiest vote I'm going to take in 15 years on the council. Plus, it'd be tough to go home because my wife was a public school teacher for 40 years, and a good portion of that time, she's a Title I LAP reading specialist. I also spent nine years in a Tacoma Rotary Program tutoring on the Hilltop, where I took all the softcover books, which aren't nearly as good as, that my wife had, that aren't nearly as good as the ones that come through this program. that aren't nearly as good as the ones that come through this program and distributed. And I'd like to give a distant, one personal example. There's a, a young girl called, I'll call her Janie, what her real name, who single, had a, was in the program when I tutored and provided her with the books. She was the, one of two children of a single disabled mother living on the hilltop in poverty. She was well behind grade level when she reached, at, at first grade, when I started helping her. Didn't have a book in the house. Her mother cared, but her mother was not only disabled, she'd been special at herself. By the end of the second grade, Janie had caught up. She got special permission at her mother's insistence to stay in the program for a third year. And today, she's a married mother of two with a white collar job and a degree. So it's emotional and personal to me. I put a lot into this kind of thing for years. And one of the beauties of this program is that it's, everyone is eligible. There's no means testing. So kids who might be embarrassed to ask, don't have to be embarrassed to ask. Kids can talk to each other about it and encourage each other to participate. So you get, get it from the ground up. So anyway, I, I don't think there's a better way the government can spend its money.
Agreed. Mr. Branstadter?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Again, I think this is a, a wise investment for the community, both on behalf of the Rotary Club, as well as on behalf of the city, to be able to go and do that. You know, and, and early start in reading maybe gets at many of the base issues around a lot of the problems in the city in terms of how, how well folks do in education, the way that they go, and, 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 and the strength of families. I, I, I was looking at the, the, the chart about the number of students that would be served, and it looks to grow from to twenty percent each year to, 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 to reaching four thousand students in year five. But I think that is a, if we're really successful in doing that, and this is a program that is for students from birth through age five, that to have four thousand students in year five, that, that means over the, the five-year term, you'll probably have to have reached seven thousand students. Because not every student in year one is going to continue to be an eligible five or, five or below student. So you're going to enroll the students in year one, and then in the second year, you're going to have to enroll not an additional same number of students, but you're going to have to account for the five-year-olds and the, and in our community, those that have transited out, okay? And I guess that I would ask that as the program develops, you know, that we, we really look in, that we really sort of keep track about how we're, how many folks do we really reach? Because I think it's, we should be, be reaching seven thousand. And, and whether or not we're going to stay with a student who moves to Kualip. Okay? And, or whether that we're going to continue to support them in our program if they are a student. That's a factor to be, to, to look at to be able to do that. Because once we're investing in a three-year-old, maybe we should invest with them while they're three, while they're four, and while they're five, even if they've moved some distance away, but are still within our reach, to be able to go and do that. So I think the program will have to evolve, but I think it'll evolve to a greater impact than really what we're looking at just in our presentation today.
Great. Thank you. Any other, Mr. Moki?
Thanks. Real, real quick question for Mr. Vargas. So if we go to give the go-ahead here in the next meeting or whatever we do with a vote, when, when does this program start? When do the first books get mailed?
It's anticipated that the first books would get mailed about two months-ish from now, hence the June twenty twenty, the start date. Although signup and fundraising is already underway. So.
Oh, signup has already started? Okay, I wasn't aware of that. So I, I look, I look forward to the next phase when we help. And I imagine the city will be helping quite a bit with the signup or making sure through our various, using Ms. Grimley to help get the word out and help, help to sign up. Because I think the signup is clearly now the execution is going to become the important part of this.
And where does the school district play the role to help with the signup? Because they obviously have the access to the families with children, under five potentially. So give us a sense of how the partnership is going to work with the Clover Park School District in signing up families with children under the age of five. Mr. Vargas?
Yeah, so as of right now, Clover Park School District has expressed an interest in joint advocacy. As for the implementation details of, you know, community outreach and signup rates, thing is yet to be determined and would have to be, have to be hashed out. But a, as of right now, I, I would not know. It is still very much, in its infancy, if you will, the, the partnership.
And I know that wasn't your role in staff work and presentation for tonight, but it's certainly something that we'll want to discuss with our friends on the Clover Park School Board and senior staff over there to make sure that this is as successful as it can be, given the level of funding. Any other questions? Yes, Councilmember Lorsella, and then the Deputy Mayor.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and, and thank you, Mr. Vargas, for presenting. This sounds like an amazing program. I've got relatives who were part of the Clover Park School District that are going to be all about this. It's, it's really going to help kids in our community. To that end, I have a couple of questions. First off, I know at some of our, some of our schools, including Taiyi Park Elementary, there's a, a volume of children that don't have a consistent mailing address because they're part of sort of a transient population that moves around. Is there a way to capture them in this program and, and include them as we move forward?
I would have to follow up on that. Councilmember Lorsella, that is, sounds like a very challenging process to address. There may be some workarounds with that, but I would have to talk with, you know, Imagination Library staff on how they've handled similar situations.
Okay, great. Thank you. Yeah, maybe even having a pickup option at the school or something for, for kids to go to a place to get them. And then expanding a little bit on Councilmember Bell's comment, how are the books selected for, for the children?
You know, I'm not sure on that question either. I think a few examples have been circulated to Rotary Club members, but I am not sure about the selection process in depth, though follow-up can be provided on that.
That would be great. Thank you. And then I have a third question. Hopefully, I, I don't go three for three. Are there other local municipalities that are participating in this program unique to their locations as well? Or is Lakewood going to be the first locally?
You know, I did read that OSPY with their fifty percent match is just recently reaching most of, of, most of the thirty-nine counties in Washington. So I'm not sure the program reach in municipalities in Pierce County, to be specific. Although I think the program has been around in other counties in Washington State. So that, that would be a point of interest to, you know, reach out and see best practices in those areas. But as for Pierce County, I'm, I'm not quite sure, although OSPY did recently extend its reach to, to partially fund or fully fund it in all thirty-nine counties in Washington. So this is a fairly recent development, reaching, reaching counties. Yep.
Great. If we can be an example to our neighbors of how to do this, that would be awesome. Thank you.
Great. So the Deputy Mayor's question's been answered. Is that correct? Okay, Mr. Anderson?
Couple of answers on that. Gig Harbor Rotary is ahead of Lakewood Rotary on this, and, and I think it's in place actually in Gig Harbor already. Tacoma Rotary Eight has agreed to take the core zip codes from Tacoma. And there are a variety of similar situations kind of percolating throughout the county. I saw a list. I don't recall all of them, but it's, it's not fully covered, but it will be relatively well-covered. Hopefully fully covered. As to your question of the book selection?
Right.
There's kind of a Blue Room panel that does that. And if you go to the Jolly Parted Imagination Library on, online, they will explain the, the rather detailed process they use to select the books. They're selected from quality authors and, and quality book production. So it's a harder cover, not a paperback. And it's, you'll be impressed by the people who will pick them. I do say that.
Well, hopefully the selection process goes well because, you know, we had our own hiccups with public art. And I apparently have an opportunity to offend many I do it well. So hopefully they do a good job in the selection process. Any other questions on the proposal from Mr. Vargas? I'd like to get a sense from council whether we've got consensus. It sounds like we do to move forward and put this on the agenda for adoption when ready. So I'm looking around. It looks like we've got consensus at the council, Mr. Manager. So let us know when it's going to be slated for council action.
Be at your next regular meeting, Mayor, May first.
Great. Very good. Thank you, members of the Rotary Club. Good program. Yeah, it'll be great. So, and Ms. Pardon, who's made an appearance for us tonight. So we thank her for her generosity and certainly her amazing philanthropy. Yeah, it's been incredible. This is a huge program, and she is coming to Washington State in June. Hopefully she'll make it to Pierce County. I know it's a statewide event, but we certainly would love to see her come down to Pierce County and share in the excitement of the program. Great. Anything else, Mr. Confield?
Of, of course, Mayor. I always have something else.
Ah, yes. Okay.
Because local government is exciting. So first off, I'd like to actually commend Mr. Vargas for facilitating and leading our community cleanup in partnership with Waste Connections this past weekend. And he was out there all day on both Saturday and Sunday. On, on Saturday, I know it was very, very steady throughout the day. And I don't have the final numbers yet, but there was a good clip of vehicles that were coming in. There was a, a long line at zero eight when the doors opened, so to speak. But then throughout the rest of the day, it was, it was very, very consistent. And then I know on Sunday, I know Councilmember Branstadter was out there. It started off okay, but then it slowed down. I think the weather and the rain coming in sideways prohibited a number of people from really wanting to come out and, and, and get out and about, if you will. But overall, a great partnership with Waste Connections to do this. And once I have the numbers, I'll be able to share, share that with you.
Great.
I know, you know, we had talked about a joint meeting with the Lakewood Water District Board of Trustees. And I think there's, there's two options for this body to do it. One is a separate standalone meeting on a Wednesday or a Thursday evening. That, those are typically evenings that work better, given all of your other boards and commissions. And the second option is to do it in advance of a study session, say from six PM to seven PM. And my recommendation would be to do that in advance of your June twenty-six study session from six to seven. We could host them right here. And yes, Mayor, we could even have dinner, given the timing of the evening on that. But Mayor, I'll leave it with you. If there's consensus to do that, I can then reach out to the Lakewood Water District and, and confirm that.
I think that makes good sense. Are we good with that? Right. As long as we've got a fairly defined, tight agenda.
Roger that, Mayor, and I'll work with you on that.
Got it. Very good. Keep the meat. Yes, exactly. Yeah, water. Like water for chocolate.
Also, I wanted to let you know, for those of you who are going to be traveling to our sister city Gimhe, and actually I want to recognize our city clerk, Brianna Schumacher. She has been in constant and regular communication with them. And by the way, they are hosting our housing over there, by the way, just as we have hosted their housing here, here, here in the States.
At no expense.
Right. And I'm going to be, I think I sent out earlier today, the city clerk was able to get an itinerary from them. And so we have passed that out to you. But also just wanted to let you know that we're not the only sister city that is going to be going to the ball, so to speak, with, with Gimhe and celebration of their cultural and arts festival, of which we were specifically invited to attend. They have three other sister cities that are going to be attending. The first is Munakata, Japan. There are going to be five delegates. It's a city of ninety-eight thousand located in the southern part of, of Japan. The second is Wuxi, China. They're going to have nine delegates. It's located, it's about eighty, eighty-five miles from Shanghai. And that is a population of seven and a half million people. So little town in China, comparatively speaking. And then the third city is from Vietnam, Tainan, which is in close proximity to, to, to Saigon in South, South Vietnam, now called, I believe, Ochi Min City. And that is a little town of one point one million people. And then there's Lakewood at sixty-three thousand plus population. So we'll be in a very, very good company and with, with our wonderful host from Gimhe. So just wanted to just share that with you. Also wanted to share that the Pierce County Library Board of Trustees had their regular monthly meeting last Wednesday, and they did take formal action to move forward on demolishing the library at Wildair. And I think as I had previously reported, they are also moving forward with constructing the interim library at Alpharetta and Gravula Lake Drive. So the next step for the Board of Trustees is now to determine the, the steps that they want to take and the location that they want to build a new permanent library, not just here in downtown Lakewood, but also over in Tilikum as well. So they will begin that process here. Actually, I think it's already underway. And we'll certainly keep this body appraised as, as, as they, as they move, as they move through that. As, as we look at your upcoming calendar, this week is on April, I'm sorry, on Saturday is Annual Parks Appreciation Day. And so volunteers will be out there in Forest at Edgewater Park, Fort Silicon Park, Harry Todd Park, Kiwanis Park, and the Lakewood Community Garden. A week from Wednesday, LASSA is having their annual fundraising breakfast. The city is going to be hosting a table of ten. If you're interested in tending, if you could please let myself or the city clerk know so that we can reserve a seat for you, because there's a number of staff that have an interest in attending that as well. And it is a fundraising, is a fundraising event. The next evening on April twenty-seventh, Lakeview Light and Power is going to be having their hundred and first annual meeting here. I'll be giving a very brief state of the city address to, to their membership. And then on Friday, April twenty-eighth, is the fourteenth annual cops versus teachers charity basketball game over at, over at Lakes High School. And then while some of us will be in Gimhe with our sister city, on Wednesday, May third, the annual meeting of the Economic Development Board for Tacoma Pierce County is actually going to be here in Lakewood at the McGavick Center. The city is going to be a sponsor of a table of ten there. And so those of you who are going to be here, if you're interested in attending, let us, let us know so we can get you signed up. And then on May fourth, on Thursday, at the Bethany Baptist Church in Kualip, will be the annual remembering our heroes, the memorial center ceremony honoring law enforcement officers killed in the line of duty and those who continue to serve. And again, that'll be May fourth at, 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 at six PM.
We'll, we'll need to send some regrets to that so they know that we're not ignoring them.
Absolutely. Absolutely, Mayor. And then just, I'd like to try and be brief here. On the state legislative front, the end is almost near. They're down to their less than a week. They're looking to adjourn this Sunday on April twenty-third. Just a quick recap, we will know this week whether or not we get the capital funding in support of Fort Silicon Park, the partnership with the Nisqually Indian Tribe, as well as funding in support of LASSA's Affordable Housing Project. Both, but, both the Senate and House capital budgets included in some shape, form, or another. On the public safety side, there's a, there's a Blake Bill, Senate Bill fifty-five thirty-six. Long story short, the Senate version is one that cities, including us, wholeheartedly support. It makes possession of a controlled or of a controlled substance a gross misdemeanor. However, when it went over to the House, the House made a number of changes to it, including reducing it to a possession to a misdemeanor. Also included use of narcotics in a public place and having that as a misdemeanor, which would usurp your recently adopted ordinance that makes it a gross misdemeanor. And long story short, you know, the the bill, we cities believe that the bill, the House version, the revised version, just really lacks accountability and is somewhat convoluted in terms of how it's to be carried out. And so in summary, cities, including our city, are wholeheartedly supporting the Senate's version. And I want to thank Councilmember Bell because she alerted to us a letter that some mayors were looking at sending to the state legislature stating that. And actually, the letter really, we couldn't have written it any better. It's been the position that we have been communicating to our delegation. So our mayor, Mayor Whalen, has has signed on to that as as well. So that's moving forward. The vehicular pursuits bill. I know there's a couple. I think it's got to go back to the House or the Senate for a minor update there. But really, the vehicular pursuits bill that came out of the Senate fifty three fifty two really does three things. It provides for vehicular pursuits for probable cause to reasonable suspicion for certain crimes, specifically a violent offense, a sex offense, vehicular assault, and domestic violence assault. However, that's it. It does not include a laundry list of other felonies and misdemeanors that, if you might recall, the Washington Association of Police Chiefs and Sheriffs sent out, and it's about four or five pages of you know, crimes that are not subject to this. So there's still a lot of work to be done as it relates to vehicular pursuits as we look out to the next session. Number two, the House version was amended to require training on risk assessment analysis for pursuing officers so that they can gauge whether the risk posed by an individual being pursued outweighs the safety risk of engaging a pursuit. Actually, the city of Lakewood, our police department already has very stringent standards in place. And then number three, it it provides one hundred and sixty four thousand dollars for the Criminal Justice Training Commission to convene a technical advisory committee to develop legislative policy recommendations related to vehicular pursuits. So that's kind of the crux of it right now. But really, that first item is something that I know not just our city, but a good number of the two hundred and eighty one cities and towns in Washington State still have some concerns with. On our Western State Hospital Community Partnership Program, both the House and the Senate budget includes the dollar amount that we had asked for. However, the House includes the budget language that focuses on services as opposed to personnel. The Senate does does not. However, I want to recognize our Senator Senator Nobles, who was reaching out to the Senate Budget Writer to request this language be included on the Senate side so that when it comes together, we'll have that language as as well. I think, as I reported last week, the middle housing bill, House Bill eleven ten is actually, I think, a little better than originally as it was proposed, but it is going to cause some disruption in single family residential neighborhoods. And for a city of our size, under seventy five thousand, it's going to require, it's going to mandate that we authorize and allow at least two units per lot on all lots that are zoned for residential uses. Two. And then four units on residential lots within a quarter mile walking distance of a major transit stop, which for us is the sounder station. Actually, that's a lesser of an issue because our subarea plan already addresses that. But really, it's that first issue that that comes into play. And then there's another bill that allows for two ADUs on top of that on all single family residential lots as well. So there's a lot happening in the housing environment and it, you know, they they don't really complement each other very well. So it's going to, I think, in the next few years, quite frankly, I think it's going to be a bit of a mess.
People are exercised about trees now.
Yeah, I don't, you know, that's actually, that's a potential poison pill. But then what prevails? Does your local tree preservation ordinance prevail? Or does the state mandated at least two units per lot shall be a shall shall occur coupled with two A D U, A D U units? So I'm just, I don't know what the answer to that question is.
I don't know either.
And then also want to recognize that our legislators did make a change to the local TIF or Tax Increment Financing Bill. Specifically that the bill allows for the relocation and construction of government owned facilities, which for us is the Washita facility. That was something that was left out in the original bill. So we're very pleased that that has made it made it through. And then lastly, I do want to recommend, recognize again Bill Adamson from SSMCP as well as his colleague Maria Tobin, who's the program coordinator for some really tremendous work that they're doing. The Defense Community Compatibility Account, which Senator Conway has been sponsoring for a number of years. Looks like it's going to make it over the finish line. Also, Maria Tobin has been working nonstop on occupational licensing and four occupational licensing bill, well, one bill with four occupational licenses included in it. This is huge. Huge for for our state. The first is for audiology and speech pathology. Second is for mental health counseling compact. Third is for dentist and dental hygienist compact. And then lastly, a nursing compact. I know that I know, I know, I don't know how that came, but it made it over the finish line.
That's great.
And and again, that's all Maria Tobin and and Bill Adamson pushing that. And want to recognize Representative Levitt. She was really the tip of the spear on 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 moving this 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 particular item through. And then I also want to recognize our Parks and Recreation Director, Mary Dawsworth. So every two years, she moves forward with a number of applications for parks grants. And the capital fund, the capital budget coming out of both the House fully funds her requests. One point two million in support of Ward's Lake Park Phase Two and three hundred and fifty thousand dollars for Harry Todd Park, specifically for pickleball courts, will probably be built around twenty four, twenty five time period. And but they, because of because of the way she prepares applications, they more than met the cutoff. Actually, they were highly rated throughout the state. So I just want to recognize Ms. Dawsworth and her team for that is, again, as the state legislature moves closer to coming across the finish line. So with that, again, that's my report, Mayor.
Thank you. Few questions, Mr. Boki.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I want to go through this drug possession thing because we may be more involved in it than we we care to be. The so it's your opinion, John, that the Senate bill is good enough. But if the House bill, the hope is that the change, basically, now that the House has made changes, it's better that the whole thing dies. But then it's my understanding that if it dies, the the interim thing that they had goes away at the beginning of July, the Blake fix, and that the state of Washington will probably be the only state in the country that does not have a law against possession of drug, illegal drugs.
That is correct.
So we would, if this falls apart, and now if they've made these changes, we kind of hope that it does. We have to come up with something that can be implemented on July first.
Oh, we did, in the open public.
Yeah, I I so so first of all.
Right? Or do we do? We need another?
So Councilmember Boki, so the state legislature is not going to allow that to happen. That's what we're hearing. So as it relates to possession, they are gonna, they are going to come to some kind of deal between the House and the Senate, even if that means going a little extra. But right now, that's their that's that's the top priority item that they're all focused on. All the other bills, they just got some concurrence here and there and some sign offs, and they're good to go. But really, the Blake decision one, that's the one. Working backwards, the 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 House bill, it's it's just confusing. It's I'll just say that. It's just confusing. Also, it reduces possession from a gross misdemeanor to a misdemeanor. And then going back to the Senate vision, a Senate version, rather. No, the city does not wholeheartedly support that. We support it because it's the best bill that the Senate and the House are willing to consider. Cities, including Lakewood, would prefer that possession of narcotics and drugs and alike be a felony. But we're at gross misdemeanor. So we're kind of, you know, cities and towns right now are focused on, okay, let's 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 support that one. But also, in fairness, the bill also, the Senate's version also includes a program for diversion and getting people who need assistance, assistance, and, you know, things things alike. So it's kind of where we are.
Very good.
Well, I guess we'll wait.
Yeah, we we will know. But you're but you're right, Councilmember Boki, that if for some reason they adjourn without taking action on that, yeah, the their possession of narcotics and dealing drugs is perfectly legal in Washington State.
Yeah, I was in a meeting today and they said, well, different towns, cities, towns, counties came up with different rules. We would literally have different laws in every city and and you just cross the city line and what there isn't even against the law could be get you, you know, ninety days. It's it's crazy. It's just crazy what's going on anyway.
I'm just a messenger.
That's why we passed our own ordinance a couple of weeks ago.
That's that's correct.
Exactly.
And by the way, a number of cities are watching your ordinance, by the way.
Absolutely. I think Bellingham stepped up and passed one similarly.
After after not doing it, they, yeah, that's correct.
Well, thank you, Mr. Caulfield. Any other questions? Otherwise, we'll turn to council comments, given the late hour. Mr. Branstad, we'll start with you.
Yes, Mayor, this this past Wednesday, I was my turn after six months of being the council member that sat in with the community collaboration that and the last time I had done that, it was a lot of people that gathered in the council chambers and each organization had about two minutes to talk about what they were doing and sharing it to do that. And so this time I was glad to see that they had changed the format significantly. They no longer meet here. That a different organization hosts the meeting. And and it allows for that organization in particular to do an in depth presentation about their services and how 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 they are going on and and really get into how they do or would like to interact with others. And it made for a a much different dynamic to to those meetings that I think is really much more positive because it it focused everybody, not just on what do I do, but here's a partner agency and 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 how does what they do help me and how can I help them? And the meaning I went to was was hosted by the Oasis Youth Center, being able to go and do that. And and I, quite frankly, learned more about the breadth of their programs than I had gleaned from just our reviews of their funding applications that we've that we've seen every two years. So I think that 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 is an advisory group or a a group that we really don't appoint, but that who we facilitate meeting that is doing good work for our community and for us.
Great. Councilmember Bell.
Thank you, Mayor. I'll be brief. I just wanted to say that I was sorry that I missed the community cleanup this weekend, but I do think it's a wonderful event that we have for our residents. And then I'm also really looking forward to the Dolly Parton Imagination Library and all that it's going to bring for the early childhood literacy. I just think it's a really fantastic program. And like you mentioned, Councilmember Anderson, I looked up some of the books and I thought that they're really good. I really like them. So that's exciting. Thank you.
Great. Councilmember Boki.
Thank you, Mayor. P C R C meeting this Thursday. Pretty long agenda. Not quite sure why. Pierce County updates, Pierce County Sheriff updates, well found behavioral health hospital updates. And then they start with housing targets and income allocation from the GMCC Chair, Chris Larson. And call for centers, Chris Larson, GMCC Chair. So they kept the action items towards the back. And then the usual stuff. So it's going to be a lot more stuff than some of the usual meetings. We had our, you know, I'm in that ad hoc transportation committee for the P C R C. We had our our meeting last, our monthly meeting last week. Staff had got together and wanted to make a recommendation, and I made the recommendation about simplifying, well, actually restricting the number of of applications per per category in the transportation grants. There's already a restriction of one in the preservation category, but this would this would put it at two. The the idea behind that is that you you wouldn't be able to run the table by putting three or four items on there. Came up at the end of the meeting because we just kind of went, we were going through an operating manual for some reason. I'm not quite sure why. City Puyallup representative was talking about centers and something else. And and so I got this at the end and was asked by the Chair Javier Figueroa to, you know, send that to staff. So we're going to send send that to staff along with another staff recommendation. We're also talking about simplifying the process. We have the by by far, you know, by 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 far the most complicated scoring process. The P C R E C uses a pretty simple scoring process. The King County follows the P C R C model, P S R C, excuse me, model. Snohomish County is a little bit more convoluted and ours is really and what it is is what I feel is like is just over the years, compromises have been made to complaints. And so they just keep kind of layering on complicated complications. What I have found, though, over the last couple of meetings, the engineers love it, right? The guys who actually score the thing, the road guys, they love it. It's complicated. It's technical and they think it's great. I don't know that we'll see a simpler scoring process. What's becoming clear, there's a couple of things becoming clear. One, Puyallup, who is the reason that we have this committee, right? Puyallup was the one that brought it up. Their representative very, very upset about the whole process. Still has not made a recommendation as to what kind of improvements they would want. They're still talking about centers are different. I agree. Not all centers look the same. They have they have yet to make a recommendation. So I keep making recommendations to simplify the process and there is an element. And and remember, it's not just the representatives that are talking, staff gets to talk. And there's at least one staff member who clearly wants the status quo to continue to exist, right? And so he's at all points is all sudden his hand goes up and zoom, he's counterpointing, right? He even counterpointed mine and mine was right at the end of the meeting. You can see his hand go up, you know, and and it's just so I don't know that anything is going to come of it. And and Chairman Figueroa has reached out to me and I'm going to respond in the next day or two and just say, I I just don't know where this is going. Because there seems to be an element that we don't want anything to change. And then the guys who really wanted the change haven't ever told us what the change should be. And then I'm in the middle of saying, well, I think we, there are some simple changes. And by the way, staff is in agreement with that. Our staff and as well as staff that count. They've looked at this, the proposal to keep it to two. Maybe we can get that done next month. I don't know. But I've I've got it. I've got to tell you, it's a frustrating experience because we just where we've been at it six plus months now. We've gone through document after document and anytime any suggestions made is, well, why do we do it? Like, that seems really complicated. Oh, you know. So right now, we're we're we'll see where it goes. But I think we've got a couple more months to try to hash something out, but the status quo may be what we end up with. And I don't know that that's a But the status quo may be what we end up with. And I don't know that that's a positive thing for Lakewood. I know it's not a positive thing for the county overall because I think that increasingly, there'll be increasing frustration over how how things are done and the complications of the process make it less likely that some people, some of the smaller cities even apply. So, you know, I'm in this position of trying to prove a negative, like I think that some places don't even apply because it's so hard and they just don't feel they have a shot at it. So on that unhappy note, I think, really, I mean, it's frustrating. And we'll see how this meeting about housing targets and income allocation, I don't know. There's no notes to this on the packet, so we'll see how the PCRC goes. Okay, thanks.
Thank you for your service on the subcommittee. As they say, blame the engineers. I guess now we'll turn to one, Mr. Laura Sella.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. A couple of notes. First, thanks to Lakewood Rotary and Mr. Vargas for presenting about the library program and to Councilmember Anderson for helping answer some of my questions. I think it's really important that the kids that are participating can see themselves represented in their books. It really helps come home. Also, the Pierce County Library System Board meeting that was held, I called into that as well. And I plan to continue to do so to advocate for our residents' needs. And I'd like to encourage our residents to also participate in the process so that they understand what's going on. Also, before the meeting today, there were a number of artists presenting here at City Hall. And the exhibits were really wonderful to see and to engage with the artists and to understand the background behind what they did. I really appreciated that our Arts Commission helped set that up. I'd like to see more of that. And finally, Parks Appreciation Day, as we mentioned, is coming up this Saturday. And I look forward to participating and hopefully seeing some of the rest of our council there. Thank you.
Very good. I know Rotary is doing work out there at Fort Silicon Park. So if you have gloves and a shovel, you want to turn bark over at the playground, come on over. Deputy Mayor Moss. Oh, that's right, Mr. Anderson.
Thank you. I've been fortunate enough to travel to over 30 countries. I think my carbon footprint is still smaller than that of Al Gore's little toenail. But one thing I found consistent around the world is that it doesn't matter where you are, what your education level is, what your color is, what your religion is, your primary concern is that your family is safe and secure. And that crosses all cultures and it hasn't changed in the United States in 230 some years since the Constitution's preamble spoke about providing for domestic tranquility in the common defense. That was the core of the whole idea. Our legislature is failing miserably and I think the letter is great. It's spot on. So please sign it. And it also, kind of another area of governmental frustration. Next week, I get to go to another Puget Sound Regional Council meeting and listen to all the virtue signal before the King County people vote their self-interest on whatever it is. So wish me luck.
Very good. Thank you very much, Deputy Mayor Moss.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'll be brief.
It's on the right side of stuff.
Some of the residents did comment on the cleanup and they appreciated the opportunity to get rid of some of the stuff that they no longer wanted. And on Wednesday, I will be attending the ribbon cutting for Coleman Worldwide Moving through the Chamber of Lakewood. So thank you.
Thank you. And I'll dovetail on that. I was asked by the Chair of the Chamber of Commerce to appear at the ribbon cutting as well. That's Wednesday at the Coleman Moving and Storage Facility. And we can get an address to you. If it's not on your calendar, I think Ms. Schumacher Schumacher can send it out. Looks like it is. It starts, there's a little social time between four and five. The ripping cutting is at five on the dot. Because I have to scoot and go then to the North Lakewood Neighborhood Association meeting right after that or the engagement they're doing there. Either quarterly or monthly program. It's like the first one under the new leadership. And so I think that's at six-ish. Let me get that for you. Ribbon cutting is at five on the dot. And then the NLNA meeting and speaking event is at the Adriatic Restaurant at the Oakbrook Golf Club starts around five-ish as well. So five, six, seven-ish, so. Yeah, the meeting's probably at six. Yeah. So that will be that. Lots of activity there. I will attend the PCRC meeting on Thursday with Mr. Boki. We already talked about the Wednesday activities. There are a lot of events that Ms. Schumacher put out, Mr. Coffield put out. There was another one, May 5th, called Ladies Night Out. It's a Lakewood Rotary event, again, to raise money for Dolly Parton Imagination Library as well as other programs that the Rotary is sponsoring. If you're interested in that or your spouse might be interested, whether male or female, there are opportunities to attend. It's going to be held at Farm 12 in Puyallup, which is a really interesting facility. And there will be dinner and shopping and opportunity for people to, you know, create a sense of community. So May 5th at Farm 12, Ladies Night Out, sponsored by Lakewood Rotary. And other than that, ladies and gentlemen, thank you very much for your attention tonight. Thank you, Mr. Vargas, for your solid work on the Dolly Parton Imagination Library presentation. I think it's going to be a great program and I appreciate the council's embracing of this opportunity to create early succeeders from early readers. I think that's just a wonderful thing for us to do.